About everywhere.
Okay, six o'clock, I'll call the August ninth. Meeting of the Bourbon Town Council to order. Uh, first item on our agenda is the approval of the July twelfth minutes. Is there any corrections, additions, comments?
Nope, I make a motion to approve the minutes from July twelfth meeting.
I second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, was not present? Under new business, we have a guest today, Gene. How are you from Surf Internet?
Good to see you guys.
Great to see you, welcome.
Yeah, so I just want to come down and thank you all for inviting us into your town. It's been really good. I think we have about thirty-two or thirty-three percent of the residents have signed up for our service, which is amazing. Like, we expect to see about twenty percent normally in the first year, and this town is killing. Like, obviously there was a need, but we're just really happy to be, happy and proud to be part of the community. Um, and when we finish a project, um, I always like to just present like a memento or a token from the project. So, um, I make these in my garage, and I make it out of the leftover fiber from the project. So this is actually a piece of fiber that came from town. When they came in, I said, hey, bring it back to me, and then I make these, and then I cut. So I just wanted to give this to you and say,
Well, thank you.
Thank you for having Surf in your town. We're honored to be here. Um, it's a good relationship for us, hopefully it's for you. And, um, would you mind if we get a picture together?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Well, we thank you for, um, the ease of, the ease of the installation and the project, and, um, great having you in town.
Well, thank you, there you go. So, yeah, this is a, this is a ninety-six count fiber. If you look inside, there's ninety-six little fibers there.
Very nice. Very nice.
Right?
Yep.
Now look over at me.
Okay. Look at Jamie. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for being in our town, we appreciate you.
Your services are really good.
Yeah, services are fantastic, thank you.
Thanks, guys, I appreciate it, thanks everyone.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Have a great night, take care, Gene?
Can I grab a car, are yours?
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Get one on my car.
Alright, so Shannon has to call in.
Okay.
So this will, I will see if I can get this to.
I can't even see ninety-six.
Of course. So while Kim's setting that up, I can give a little bit of backstory. I think what Shannon's gonna talk about is just the Okra and SRF and the water treatment plant, Kim? Or do you know if she was gonna talk about wastewater at all?
That probably will come up, only because that might be holding us up.
Gotcha.
So, why don't you go first and then I'll call her?
I can do that. So, the main reason I think Kim's pulling in Shannon is to talk about the project financing and funding. Um, as it sits today, we're in line for an SRF loan. Now, we also want to pursue any kind of grants or forgivable loans or additional free money. Um, SRF has a program where they will provide grants.
There you go.
Where they will provide grants or forgivable loans. However, we won't know if we're eligible for that until late September, October. So, our schedule for the project design is to advertise in late September, open bids in sometime in October, and be closed, ready to start construction before the start of the year.
Okay.
That's the schedule we'd be on, should we get an SRF forgivable loan, or should we decide not to pursue any additional funding?
Okay.
Let's say we don't get an SRF forgivable loan. The fallback option would be to pursue an Okra grant.
Mm-hmm.
That would be a grant for the amount of about seven hundred thousand dollars, and that's based off of need, community rates, you know the spiel, how that works.
Yep, sure.
Why would we want to consider that? Baker Tilly's preliminary numbers show about a five to seven dollar offset, should we get an Okra grant. Um, so Shannon, I think, is gonna talk about the intricacies of how the wastewater project might tie into our eligibility with the water project. Because, as I understand it, we'd have to be closed out of the wastewater project.
Correct.
Before we can start a new one.
Yes.
And I think she's figured out a way where she's comfortable with finagling that.
I believe so.
Um, I'm glad she can do it. So with that, I think it's, it's good to run over.
Here's, here's papers that,
Okay.
From Shannon on, on all that, so.
We gotta be pretty close, I'm closing that out though, aren't we?
It, it's,
No?
It's coming to the close. Um, Shannon did, uh, talk with folks at Okra and did confirm that, um, once we close that out, we can apply.
Hello, hey, I'm gonna put you on speaker, okay? Okay, Shannon, I think you should go, be able to go. Hi, everyone.
Hi, Shannon.
Hello.
So, I printed up a, um, kind of a little flyer as to what the situation is. Do you all have a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay. Well, here's the deal with it. So we thought that we were going to pursue this water project without trying to obtain an Okra grant, because we were all hopeful that SRF was going to give us quite a bit of the four point seven million in what they call a forgivable loan, otherwise known as a grant. And I still think that that might be the case. The problem is, I'm standing outside and there's church bells going off. Um, the problem is, we won't know how much grant they're going to give us until sometime late September, early October. In turn, as a potential backup plan, so let's, we're, we're hoping that late September, early October, they give us good news, and they give us at least seven hundred thousand or more in grant. If they do that, then we would pursue the project without any Okra grant money. But, if they come back and say, well, we're only gonna be able to give you three hundred thousand in grant, the seven hundred thousand from Okra would be a better, you, you could keep the three hundred that they're gonna give, plus then add on the seven hundred, so that you'd get a million in grant, which would be a much better deal.
Mm-hmm.
So, what I was talking to Wesler about, uh, just last week, is that we kinda work a B plan. Our A plan is, we'll fund this project, SRF only, SRF's giving us a grant, and we're moving forward, and we're gonna try to get everything bid and advertised and started possibly yet this year, under contract this year. But, if that doesn't work, then we'll have the B plan, which means that we would throw our hat into the Okra ring and, and do a proposal. The proposal for Okra is due September thirtieth. We could submit the proposal, and then if we get good news from, uh, SRF, we just don't move forward and submit the full application. But if we don't get good news from SRF, we could move forward with the application to Okra in November for that seven hundred thousand.
Okay.
But we have to, the bottom line is, is that to keep that Okra op, that option alive, I have to do, we, we, we would have to get the proposal in by, you know, that September thirtieth. And in turn, that's why I need you guys to make a decision tonight, if you want to, if you want to at least get your hat in the ring and keep that door open until we know whether or not we need to shut it or walk through. So, the seven hundred thousand, if, you know, if we get, if we get less than seven hundred thousand from SRF, I think we'd still wanna pursue, it does delay your project, the bidding and everything, by a good four to six months. It's, and you can kinda see that, that schedule that I put together. So, you know, if SRF's your A plan, you could be under, you know, try to get your construction contracts signed yet in December, uh, or maybe even earlier. If we have to end up going on the B plan, we're looking at, you know, first part of May before we could get construction contracts signed. Uh, just because the timing, how it stacks out. But the seven hundred thousand does buy down your rates, uh, by somewhere between five and seven dollars a month per household. So, you know, the, there's an advantage to that, and like I said, if SRF gives us seven hundred or more, you're right there, so you don't need that. The only disadvantage, that the gamble is here, is that in order to do that proposal, we're gonna have to do a public hearing at next month's meeting, which that's not a big deal, but there'll be forty, you know, forty dollars or so to publish the public hearing notice. And then for me to come to the meeting and complete the proposal, and submit it by September thirtieth, you're looking at a thousand dollars. Um, so, that's the risk, you may be spending a thousand dollars that you don't need, but at least it's keeping that seven hundred on the table. You have any questions?
Guys, anything?
I'm all for saving the money and moving forward, like, like what you suggest.
Yeah, I would agree. Please, please.
A couple things to, to, to consider. Um, the, the timeline of construction and just the condition of the plant.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
I get it.
You know, that's something that Steve and Caroline are, is weighing on their minds.
Yep.
So I just wanted to echo that on their behalf here.
Okay.
That, that's really my, my main concern of, of the timeline, you know, normally when we're building a project that's not leak and ready to, you know.
I don't think the plant's in the condition that won't last for four or five months, though, so I, I think we're okay.
I agree with that. We need a motion?
Yeah, you wanna make the motion?
I'll make a motion that we follow along with, uh, what her idea is for the community is the best interest of the financing.
I second that, 'cause I know she's awesome and she's gonna get this done.
So I have a motion.
Well, at least, uh, at least I'll keep that door open for you, let's put it that way.
Yeah, so I have a motion and a second to, um, um, consider the Okra grant and have Shannon McLeod work on that piece, as well as the SRF.
Spread that charm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Shannon.
Okay, well, I'll be in touch, Kim, next week, and you and I can work out the logistics to get ads in the newspaper and all of that, but that way we can keep things rolling, and, you know, hopefully we'll get the good news and we won't have to go to the November cycle, but if we do, at least we made the proposal in, and we've still got that window of opportunity there for us. So, I'll touch base next week, okay? Alright, thank you very much. Alright, goodnight, see y'all later, bye-bye. Bye. Do you have anything else you need to discuss then, Adam?
I just have one more item to discuss, and that's from our, the minutes I sent out today, Kim, but since I have counsel here, if you have a minute. One, one item that we wanted to discuss, and Kim wanted your input on, was whether we should look at a mandatory or voluntary pre-bid meeting for the project. Do we require the contractors to be at the pre-bid, and if they don't attend, do we not, do we stop them from bidding? Uh, this, recently, this has been pretty contentious, um, with, with other communities. And, um, you know, the, the two sides of the coleen are, if you make it a mandatory pre-bid, and somebody wants to bid your project, but for some reason can't attend, that limits your pool of bidders. The other side is, other communities have said, well, if it's important enough to that contractor, they'll send someone there. I don't care who it is, as long as someone from the contractor is representing them. Um, we've seen some issues in the past where originally it was voluntary, or it was mandatory, and then it's been changed to voluntary, and that's caused some issues with just contractors and frustration.
Oh.
As it sits now, our, we talked about this a couple months ago, and we had landed on mandatory. Because if it was important enough, they'll send someone to be here.
What, what's the advantage of having them there, versus just having your organization review the information given a recommendation?
You get to meet it.
Okay.
That's, that's really it. The pre-bid meetings are pretty low-key. Normally don't last more than a half hour. It's just, hey contractor, here's the plans, here's the specs, you have any questions, let's go look at the site. So is, is there a serious driving factor to make it mandatory on this project? I don't see one. Now, on, on other projects where there's something that you just know the contractor has to put their eyes on, or you need to talk through with them, yes, I would make it mandatory. But here, I, I don't see that driving factor behind it, so I, I'd like to lean towards voluntary, just to keep our pool of bidders, our potential pool larger.
I guess historically, we've accept, or we've reviewed, uh, bids, we've had bids come in, and our, our engineering firms that we've hired, we've relied upon them to give recommendations, whether it's our streets or our sewer and water, so I'm good with voluntary, but guys, it's up to you.
I think COVID's played a big play in this, and, and, uh, you can make it mandatory and have the people show up, and then, and the contractors and the engineers still not get along.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, uh, I, I don't see any benefit of having them. I mean, it's, we're not gonna have any answers for them, it's gonna have to be back to you guys to revert, re, review that, so.
And we will be present for the pre-bid either way, but, you know, um, if they ask questions, it's always something we take under advisement.
Right, absolutely. So, do you need any vote on that, Kim?
No, I don't believe so, uh-uh.
Okay, so I think, I think we're,
I'm good with that.
Consensus is voluntary, then?
I appreciate it.
Perfect, thanks.
Thank you.
Alright, um, the agreement between the Town of Bourbon and the Triton School Corporation to put a full-time police officer in the Triton schools. Uh, that was approved by the school corporation at their last month,
July meeting.
Their July meeting. Um, the officer has already been through school resource officer training, which is a requirement of Indiana law now, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and he starts tomorrow. Um, you guys have had an opportunity to review this.
I make a motion to accept that.
Very well.
Second.
Motion and a second to, uh, accept the agreement with Triton School Corporation, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'm excited.
Beautiful.
I think it's awesome for the community, and for the school.
He was pretty pumped today. He said that, the first, like, yesterday was the first staff day, and so, he, he's excited to see the kids.
Now, will he have a car up there?
So, for now, he's gonna use a reserve car.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Awesome.
He'll, he'll have a computer, whatever he needs.
Good.
Beautiful. Alright, um, there's something not on the agenda that we have discussed. Kim, um, how many days are left for Bill?
Four.
Okay, so, um, our chief, you know, has been out on sick leave. He has, he would have four days of unpaid time off. Um, and I would like for counsel to consider extending, uh, his paid sick leave by four days, uh, to allow him to be paid until he comes back on the twenty, the seventh of September or something?
Yeah, sixth, I was gonna say, September sixth, yeah.
So.
I make a motion, I think that just,
With, he didn't realize that he had, um,
He still had some other days.
Sick days that he wasn't aware of, so.
So we're talking a total of four days, um, to extend him.
Just my perspective, I'm sure there's lots of phone calls and stuff that he's done off-duty.
Yeah.
You know, in today's age, I mean, he's been a seasoned employee.
I know that, uh, he's talked to me on numerous occasions, I know he and the sergeant have had probably every day. Um, and he's reached out to me on things for, for questions, so I know he's worked.
Yeah.
He's worked from home, there's just no two ways about it.
Make a motion to, to do that for him.
I definitely second that.
Motion and a second to extend Bill Martin's sick day, paid sick days by four, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Kim, the floor is yours.
Approval of claims four, five, seven, five, to four, six, five, six, three hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents.
Make a motion to accept those claims tooling that amount.
I second that.
Motion and a second to approve claims is submitted, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Um, resolution, approval of resu, resolution twenty twenty-two dash ten, it's a budget reduction. Only because, um, those funds, we're not going to use what we had appropriated, and therefore it just allows us to budget for twenty twenty-three. So it's a cum capital development, fifty thousand local roads and streets, ten, and the cum, cumulative capital improvement of twenty thousand dollars.
Make a motion to accept that resolution twenty twenty-two, ten?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve resolution two thousand twenty-two dash ten, all in favor?
Saving money's good. Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
And the only other thing is, the public hearing on the budget will be at our regular scheduled meeting on September thirteenth, and then the budget adoption will be set for September twenty-seventh. That's all.
Very good. Sergeant?
Oh, I have nice, uh, monthly reports, and I wanna be careful to brief about what's on the new reserves.
Okay.
Uh, doing really well. Uh, one just graduated from the academy, Brandon Newing, been out riding quite a bit.
Okay.
Pretty good there.
Good, good, good. Questions for Sergeant Amston?
I don't.
Okay. Roger, Terry?
Uh, we have the activity reports.
Sir.
A lot of the night was in person.
Yep.
Uh, we have Brian, DJPR here, also, uh, to talk a little bit about the project.
Okay.
Uh, uh, thank you. So we met with, uh, Phil Bowers from EMV On-Site, uh, last Friday, and we went over a few things as far as what was going to be done. So we are completing Liberty Sidewalk on the south side in preparation for the, uh, next project phase on the north side. And, uh, we had a few, um, uh, changes in, in the field, but everything was, uh, smoothed out, so we should have a nice, uh, surface for you guys in the next month.
Great, perfect.
Uh, and it should be done with the sidewalk, we quoted earlier.
Uh-huh.
So, it's the last portion of it, so that's gonna happen.
I know, I came back from being gone for a week, and the, the town was like a hub of construction activity, which I really liked. I thought that was neat to see the improvements going on, so thank you for orchestrating and making sure all that gets done, and JPR as well. Um, also, I wanna, um, before we move on, uh, I wanna thank, um, our town employees. Um, they have done a lot of work in the park this year with getting the courts finished up, installing some benches, um, and just kinda orchestrating a lot of work there, as well as all the other stuff that they just have to do on a day-to-day, so. Roger, please thank everyone down there for us.
I'd also like to thank our part-time guy who hired in the,
Yeah, he did a nice job.
Yes, he did.
Yeah, good. Okay, questions for Roger of any kind?
I just have one that,
Yes.
I know in, in past, I'm just asking, make sure we still doing that, but on, uh, the parade coming up and stuff, are we gonna paint the,
I can, if I can get time this week, I'm gonna paint those.
We have the part-time guy, right?
Nope.
He's going back to school.
Back to school.
Back to school.
What are we painting?
They always paint the curving,
Oh, okay.
In town on three thirty-one.
Oh.
Makes it look nice and fresh, make people come for the parade.
Got you.
Mine happen late at night, so.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
I, I wanna sweep also, but.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, 'cause Summer Fest is coming, this, this coming weekend.
I've never driven a sweeper.
Here we go.
Okay, Ward, you wanna fight for the sweeper?
No, it's all your, I, I've heard about that sweeper, you can have it.
You getting dizzy watching stuff cool?
No.
Yeah, you're fine.
We have the, how about if we have Midnight's run the sweeper?
Sure, you would love it.
Yeah, probably would.
My second thought.
He would love it.
Put a little red light on it for him. Alright.
Thanks for everything you do.
Chuck?
Um, been working on some properties around town that need some, uh, extra work and,
Okay.
Clean up, and, uh, sent some letters out, working with, uh, Alex on what our next steps are and where we go with that. Trying to get the alleys cleaned up. What street is that? Off Center Street.
The alley?
Yeah.
Come on.
Down at, uh, Cotterman's.
Oh, uh,
I didn't say that.
Center Street, it's between Center Street and Washington Street.
Yeah.
It runs north-south through here.
It's,
The alley, yeah.
Pretty grown up and bad, and then we're sort of trying to get that done, and,
Okay.
Some other things. Been, uh, going to Shell's, this is the, uh, pictures that I took on July eighteenth. Um, I go there every week now, um, at least once for inspection. They are, uh, looks like a big hill of dirt, but they are digging it out. We're back another probably eight to ten feet or better that they haul out. And they're still working at it every day, so. We gotta, their plan is to take that building and to, uh, get it refurbished, they're gonna want to rent it out. So they've gotta get all that out of there, so that there's parking and not water running into it and that sort of thing.
Is that the old DPS building?
Yes, so.
I know they're hauling gobs of dump truck loads a day.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
And, you know, the bad thing about it is, I wish there was a place we had that we could use that type of fill. But, because of its use, we can't. They take it to the landfill, dump it, and then the landfill uses it to cover,
Oh, okay.
Their spot, so.
Good.
We are working on it, not gonna let up, we're,
Good.
Giving them a little more time.
Okay.
They wanted to change our agreement, and talked to Alex about that. And right now, we're gonna leave what we have in place, because it's got a little more teeth,
Oh.
For the town, and, uh, we're protected better.
Okay.
If we come up with a better wording or better solution, we, we may do that, but,
Very good.
Right now, we're just gonna leave that in place and,
Okay.
Push them forward.
Sounds great.
Any questions, or?
Been a long road.
Yeah, that's what I understand. That's what I understand. Um, Roger, in regards to Shell's, uh, the issue with the sewer, they were, they were going down there pumping that out all the time?
I haven't been there in a while.
So it's, they, whatever they did fixed. Good, perfect.
I would usually found out, so.
That's good to know, that's good to know. Okay, thanks, Chuck.
What's a, just status of the homes property?
You mean Karen home?
Yeah.
So, um, Chuck had gone and looked at, I think, two of them, um, and said that they, they looked pretty immaculate from the outside. So when they look inside, the, under the agreement, the final property is due to be in compliance next month. Um, so, I think the idea is that probably set aside an afternoon where the three of us, plus Karen, will go into all three homes and see where she's at with it. So, I've, I've been talking to her new attorney, um, he said that she was still getting a few things, the last property taken care of. Um, but I've made him aware of that, under the agreement, she needs to have it all in compliance next month.
Okay.
That's the final month.
Okay. Alright. I guess, go ahead, I'm sorry.
The other thing was a house with the fire, what, what's the status of that one?
You talking about four, four oh eight?
Yeah.
Yep.
So I was, I was gonna tell, I guess you're getting into me now, but,
Yeah, go ahead.
So there, there's, there's essentially three properties right now that we have active abatements on. We have four oh eight East Liberty, we have two oh one Quad, and then I just, um, filed one, also in Circuit Court, um, for, um, two oh eight Regency Place, which is owned by Wingate Properties. Um, they, they have appealed.
That one, I think, is sold.
Is it?
Oh, on Center Street.
Okay.
Yeah, that possibly is sold, I heard from that lady,
Okay.
Today, she put an offer, and is pretty sure that they're gonna accept it, so.
Okay.
Is she the neighbor that wanted it in the first place?
Wanted it in the first place, so I'll let you know if I hear anymore on that, but.
Okay, well, maybe that one will,
Are we still mowing that?
No, I haven't mowed since,
So they're, found someone to mow it?
Yeah, I hope so.
Good.
Well, they hooked, they hooked up with Hoppers after I spent the afternoon with him,
Good.
One day, so.
Okay.
But, yeah, I think it's,
Alright, yeah, let me, let me know.
I will.
That'd be great.
The four, four oh eight East Liberty and two oh one Quad, um, Judge Palmer has ordered that Chuck be allowed inside the homes on the fifteenth.
Okay.
So he'll go inside, make a full report, and then the following week, we are set to be back in court, where we'll give the report to Judge Palmer. And I imagine unless they, you know, the homeowners show up and have a viable solution very quickly, they'll probably be abated at that time.
Good.
So, that was my report.
Um, and is Cockle, any, no, other than the female that was there?
He's incarcerated,
Yeah.
K County, so he, yeah, that's what I was gonna say, there is a family friend there that Judge Palmer asked us to reach out to before we go, more as a courtesy than anything to let,
Doesn't have any legal standing on the property, though?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay, very good. Okay, very good. Alright, well, thank you. Anything else?
That was it for me.
Okay. Okay. Very good.
You skipped chat.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, I've already, I gave you money already, Chuck.
Uh, since the last meeting, we've had twelve calls, one gas leak, two wrecks, and two pole fires. And then just in this last week, we've had seven false alarms. Uh, I don't know, I mean, some, they said they're gonna fix it. The business that was there prior to them, it was two, three, four times a month sometimes. I don't think we have an ordinance to where we can charge for false alarms.
Not that I know of.
Where's this at, Chad?
Uh, CTE.
Polymer.
Oh.
Have, have you had one since Sunday? Or since the weekend you were out there a lot? Have you had any more?
No, not since then, but they pulled the power on it.
Okay.
Uh, there is an Indiana Code thirty-six, eight, twelve, seventeen.
Okay.
Uh, it's false alarm service charges for volunteer fire departments. I have not had a chance to read that yet. But I don't know, I mean, do we have to have an ordinance to, I don't know what to do on that.
Well, the ordinance just allows us to charge for going out there?
Yeah, I like...
For false alarms, right?
You know, you get one a month, you get one a month, and anything after that, we charge.
Yeah.
Like I said, I haven't read that Indiana Code yet. I haven't had time.
Um, can you leave that with Alex?
Yeah.
Just jot it down so he can review it and tell us if it's something that's still in effect or whatever?
I know, yeah.
I just...
And I, I still will reach out to Travis and talk to him.
No. Uh, not last Saturday, but the Saturday before was three times. Like, we barely even got back to the station and got our gear off, and the tones dropped again.
Yeah.
This Saturday at four AM, tones dropped.
Mm-hmm.
Key holder disregarded us, but county's policy is you can't disregard if the fire, or if the alarm company calls. So I went out there and, uh, Devon called him again and told him not to call us. Well, then I called him and told him, if it happens again, just call my cell phone. That way we're not waking everybody up. I'll go confirm it's a false alarm. And, uh, it happened seven AM, nine AM. And then Don finally pulled the power to it at nine AM.
I'll, I still haven't talked to Travis, but I will. Ask him to...
Maybe I give him motivation. I told him they need to find a different company, because they're using the same company that Omni Source had.
Okay.
And it's the same West Wall Pole Station.
Okay, I'll talk to him. In the meantime, Alex can, you and Alex can work together and read about it.
Okay.
Very good. Anything else?
Uh, nope, that's all I have.
Okay, cool.
What time are fireworks?
Yeah, what time are fireworks?
Uh, I would say ten, maybe a little before, right at dark, you know, right at dark.
Whatever dark is anymore.
Yeah, whatever dark is.
Is that Sunday?
Saturday.
Saturday.
Saturday, okay.
Yes.
All right. Patron comments? Anyone from the community?
I got here late, but not late to never, but I wanted to give the town and everybody an update on the Summer Fest.
By all means, please.
Yeah, I was at the school hooking up the power cords, so I got here as quick as I could, just about at the end here. Uh, number one, I want the fire department, police department, the town, I wanna say thank you for everything that everybody does to help us coordinate this thing and, and get it together. With the coordination of the school, and this year it's been a little tough because of the school starting. You know, it started, well, tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow, so been working close with Jeremy and Bruce Gephardt to make sure that I'm not in their way and we can pull this thing off. And, uh, just wanna let the town know, yeah, the, and, and the, especially the police department, because with everything we know that's going on in the world right now, um, to any, any of the police guys that are on that, you know, the, the more patrolling we can get down there, and I know last year, Car Show less shows up in uniform. There's nothing better at, at those activities if those policemen come and walk through. Because, and I tell all the car guys, we had one idiot pull out, um, you know, with, with us being at the school, when we was at the park, we was in a contained area. And if some idiot wanted to get out and act like a kid, um, he didn't really have an audience. But now, where they can pull out on Triton Drive or twelve B, and I announced that, you know, we're not gonna play that game. And I encouraged, if, if you see anybody doing that, I mean, don't be afraid to make an example out of them, because it's all about safety and, and now we're kinda regulated by, by school rules. And the biggest thing is, is to be safe. And, and to add it to the, you know, last, if you're a county uniform policeman, I mean, any of you guys that are there, if you guys step up to any of the food booths and you're in uniform, that's taken care of. So I want all the policemen to know that. Um, and like I said, we just, it, we, we appreciate the, the appearance of all you guys there. I know you're always there, and I don't know if Bill's gonna be there for the, he always chooses a police chief's award. Um, you might check with him and see how...
I will ask him.
How he's doing, and if not, we'll, we'll have an award that, you know, one of you that's there, um, that day needs to tell us what the favorite vehicle is, and then we give the award out.
Sergeant's award.
There you go. Yeah, and for the, it's a police chief's award, and it's just kinda, it's a neat award, yeah, to give to the town.
Yeah.
Holding on a golf cart down there.
There you go.
Yeah, so like I said, you know, appreciate everything that everybody's done, and, and I think it's gonna be, we've got a, a full list, you know, everything we could possibly do. And if weather permitting, we're gonna try to launch the hot air balloons on Saturday night. And then we've got the BMX stunt team coming in from, from south of Indy. And, you know, weather permitting, the car show's always a success, as it always is. Um, you know, if we can beat the weather, it looks like we might have something rolling in later in the day. Uh, but, you know, if anybody's got any questions, and I know I'll speak to Chuck, a couple, we'll go over a couple of things. We stepped outside to make sure we're all on the same page. Uh, but like I said, yeah, the big thing is the, the, the police appearance. And when those cars are letting out Sunday afternoon, like I said, don't, don't, don't do anybody any favors because we're, it's gotta be safe. And that's what it's all about, is, is protecting everybody and the kids and the cars. And some of them old guys get kinda stupid when they think there's a crowd. So, but I warned them all, I said, listen, if our guys are an officer in uniform, they're gonna do their job. So, um, like I said, just wanna tell everybody, thanks for everything that everybody's done. Hopefully it'll be a good weekend.
Looking forward to it, thank you.